All set, Eric?
So it's 6:02 and I'd like to call the October 3th. It's on Board of Education regular meeting in a quarter. Everyone should stand for the flag of allegiance.
The United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and justice.
Have any public comment? Comment? Eric, no. This is a public comment and we move on to the approval minutes for the September 19th Board of Education.
Second.
Any comments or changes?
I did. I voted to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. It was written that I had abstained. I didn't. That needs to be amended.
Well, I wrote that because you weren't at the meeting.
It's okay to approve meeting minutes without being present if you don't see anything that's outstanding. So I think that correction should be made.
I think we need to get, because our practice has been, if you're not at the meeting, we abstain. That's been the practice. That's been the practice. It's been if we're not in a meeting, we don't approve the minutes. We abstain. If, if you do want to approve it, I think we should check with, put it on our list with.
Attorney, which is why other boards, other boards I've served on, and I said this two weeks ago. I, people have been absent but have approved if there's something unusual. And also I know the Board of Finance, they had a meeting in Deans Hall recently, asked a couple of members of Board of Finance to vote for approval of the minutes, even though two of them had not been present. So we're at, they actually wanted to say, but actually were told to vote in approvals. I think it needs to be reviewed.
Yeah, so we'll do that. So let's get, let's get, our practice has been as long as I've been on the board. And if you're not at the meeting, we abstain, which is fine. I'm not saying it's right. That's been our practice.
No, I understand that.
Just to confirm what is, I don't know what officially we're supposed to. So if that's the rules that we should have stayed, then we'll stay in it. She says you can approve them even if you're not there, then allow that. Yeah. Yeah.
It's like that we have had, we're moving on this. And the individual states that they have been doing minutes for this case, which has. How many of these conversations, if you take that, then if they, yes. That's the general practice.
Is it, what if they didn't watch the video?
Well, I think when we got the ruling, videos weren't available. So producer, producer, I think test to show that they should be.
I don't know if we have a policy. We have a practice.
Past practice.
And our practice has been for a long time, that's what we've done. So I think it's worth checking and if we're going to change our practice, we'll change our practice. But I think, I don't want to change something that we've done for many years without attorney, our attorney's opinion. So that's okay, or what the stipulations are, if you have to test it. So.
I have a second comment too. Under, when Jackie wrote up about the award that we received, which I'm really proud of the award that we received at the middle school. And I said, I'm concerned about the vernacular that's being used. How do I go about getting that into the minutes? Because I have a really strong statement about that. Eliminating the use of push-in when we talk about inclusion, and I've been saying that for three years. And have said that for 26 years prior to, well, three years I've been on the board, 26 years I've been in town. 10 years I was doing speech back in Nebraska where we didn't use the word push-in for services. We called it inclusion. I think it's time we reframe our ideas and practices. So we don't think about pushing kids into the room. It's a, it's a thinking. It's a, it's a way of viewing everyone that we serve. Not just the highly gifted or the average. It's about serving everybody to the best of our ability. We don't push them in. We include them. It's just such a different vernacular. And I really want that struck from our vocabulary. And that was the comment that I made.
And where is that? Sorry.
It was not. And that's my concern because unless I kind of.
Basically, you want that comment in the, in the minutes as well.
Well, discussion ensued does not speak to my, please let me finish.
Oh, you're going to finish. I just wanted to.
This discussion ensued does not, in my opinion, speak to the importance of us feeling like everybody needs to be included, should be included. And not pushed in.
Yep.
Yeah. I concur. However, what I would like to suggest is that what you could do in the future is state it in board comments. That way it would be. If you were just having a discussion, anyone that's taking the notes isn't going to take down every single word that every single member is saying, nor should they be expected to. It's just the way that it is. But if you want it specific at a board comment, that would be the time.
So, just going back to both, so for your first one in terms of modifying minutes. Not say that you abstained, say that you approved.
I did.
Understood, but until we get a board, until we get attorney.
I understand.
I, I don't want to change anything until we get attorney's review because we've never done that. So I just want to make sure that, that we're following the right crack procedures. For that, in terms of modifying these minutes. Open to what you're, you know, I think what Candace said in terms of board comment and putting it in board comment. That would be, those are very, when you look at board comment, they're always expressly written out. Is that something that you're okay with tonight in board comments to mention that?
I was planning on doing that later, but I would really like the minutes to be amended to include that I made a statement regarding the reduction or elimination of the vernacular push-in when we talk about students are included in the classroom. It can be a simple one-line statement. That's what I would like. And I will bring it up for board comment and I was planning on bringing it up. Thank you.
You can just, if she wants to add that comment in past practices, we've, you know, you can add, yeah, we can add her comment. No, no, but just something that was missed that she wanted.
Okay, okay.
To put Kate's comment into the, into the minutes.
Okay.
But I think it's a good approach and a good idea that came in the future. Ask that, that that be stated in the minutes and now, because otherwise we're not going to, we're not going to put everybody's, you know, there is comments in, well, no, unless, unless it's clarified. So you can clarify. That helps. That's good.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? On the, we'll have the votes for the evening house. Does it happen to say anything?
I did. Good catch, Esther.
Other thoughts, moments? Okay, all those in favor with the adjustments? Minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes pass. Move on to selectmen representative and we have the authority here. Oh. More important call.
Everybody wants you.
Just can't win sometimes. I think somewhere along the line, you miss all, I mean, one. Seems that way. My structure. I suppose it's not easy way. It probably will be by the time you get out. So several items that we have been discussing, which you're probably aware of, one is the charter division commission. And we did vote unanimously to consider the charter division commission. And we are now working on the charge for the commission. Once the commission is formed and they can, the charter is fully open. And other documents can be activated. Right now, we have about 15 general questions to consider, to consider. Some of these things have come up before in previous charter division commissions, such as to launch the line, the plan, the zone commission. As many other towns have done, that's been, I have launched previous charter division. That was closed down twice. Well, it's on again. We, we are in a position, once this has been set up, then we have, we have very strict guidelines that we have to follow. Including timing and just the makeup of the commission itself. There are, of the. There may not be more than a civil majority of any of the party on the commission. There'll be 11 people. We made it 11 because there will be new subcommittees that are set up. The missions have been passed, so if you submit any to. Lots of other people that their opinions on this should be. So it's going to be. Mark, and we have the topics that they're handling. We are also, they may be no more than three people who are at least either elected or appointed to serve on boards and commissions. So now we have people of education, Haley on there. Sorry, but just in case you anxious to get on a committee, then have even more subcommittee meetings than you had.
But we heard Tim was going to be the.
Tim Hagan's interested.
Yeah, we heard Tim was going to be.
We have him on the list.
Nice.
So we will be requiring, once we get the charge completed, then we will be asking the interested people to submit a written statement. And then also to come forward to. The, for sure. Some people are, who have already expressed interest are new to town and we are familiar with them. So we want to see them directly to meet them. So that will be on the agenda. The issue of Darryl Pond property. There were 100 acres of that property that were designated to be reserved for, especially these 200 acres set aside to be permanently reserved. So we'll be discussing in detail about that 100 acres, which we have very limited development on so far. Really no development except for hiking trails. Limited park. So that's something that you probably will want to hear from some comments from Board of Education. And perhaps tap into some of the expertise that we've had in building sports fields. Whether or not we're feeling is that we need additional fields to accommodate schools, schools and sports needs. And then we've had some other comments in the public. Particularly law, which has become very popular, which I admit, I haven't tried yet. I might be vicariously on that. But people like, who's the, who's the girl?
This doll.
This doll, yes. So we have had some input already. And as part of the funding for the rescue, we're doing our domestic funds, we devoted some money to the subset to have study as to how best to utilize. In such a manner that they preserve open space as they get it through the law. That's it. We probably got a group. So I would assume my season was. There are two complaints that I noticed that I thought would be in particular in your board. One is a bill on children's mental health. And another one is on dealing with juvenile justice, non-justic court system, which I think might have some issues for. Another bill which clearly clarifies procedure.
Will you be in touch with Mr. Carlson as far as preserving the natural?
Yeah.
Yes, of course. For the Darryl Pond area and all that, right? Okay.
Yes, as well as. On there, on the. Where I know some of the things that people like. Skip it.
Right.
With the. There are a lot of things to consider besides this, the dog, the path. Very old road. Very narrow.
See, Roseanne.
Any questions?
I only hope there aren't accessibility, the road being one clean.
Plus it's a very old road.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that the road itself, that would be a concern in a sense. Some suggestions are negative, maybe distributed on the street. If you have a lot of traffic, it's trying to navigate up there, especially coming out of the. There are some people that we still love to see. Turn places around, bring the dog, bring the festival. It's a lot of traffic. Like more different ways, on a place. And.
Thanks, Ms. Harding. I know you have other meetings, so. Yes.
Very sorry. So very sorry.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to the student representative. We have Manat Kadian here.
Good evening. I just have a bookie. So it's currently spirit week and so today is a job day, tomorrow is Tuesday, is study day. Wednesday is college day and we're raising money for a college. With veterans and two dogs. And then Thursday is nerd and white day and then Friday is color day. October 5th is the college fair after school. October 8th is. And October 12th is the PSET testing and then at that time seniors can come to live.
Yeah. For the adults, Roseanne.
No, no. No, no.
Don't you also have the club fair on the 5th too?
I do.
At the same time?
No, so during the school day we'll have the club fair with just the students during our lunch phase. And then after school we'll have the college.
Yeah, what evening's the calendar? That's in the evening.
Yes, it's six o'clock. Yeah.
College fair.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I do. What is your name again?
Manat Kadian.
How do you spell that?
M A.
Okay, I got Kadian usually enough. Okay. So are you going to be with us for the whole year?
Uh, yeah, I'll switch out with Brendan. And then here will also be her. She's the.
Nice, very nice. So what did you do today, Manat, when the internet went down?
Um, we just kind of essentially did a lot of paperwork today. And I was looking up on my phone, or in the class. So I really just.
Nice, good answer. Thank you.
Any question?
Please score for, for spirit week. Oh, yeah. Like early, any early leaves that she has.
Of course they are.
Big decorations coming out here.
Yeah.
That's tomorrow. We're setting it off in the morning.
Oh, okay.
You gotta go vote.
Everybody that I saw. Yes, you have good participation.
I was wondering, I took my next door neighbors and brought them home because they needed a ride. I was like, is this how you guys dress? Now I know.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Reports and we move on to. Item.
To approve the consent of that.
Second?
Either Kate or Candace. I see, I guess.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion passes for those at home. This was the approval of. Rocketry Club from the National Association of Rocketry in the amount of $500. So. Rocketry and. Appreciate that. So. Discussion action items, instructional and presentation on restorative practices.
So everybody's heard a lot about restorative practice and the work that we're doing. I'm going to turn it over to Spazian, who's going to introduce our guests, who are going to take us attendance to team-minute presentation and ask some questions afterwards. So at least.
Yeah, so it's my honor to introduce Joanne Freiber and Pat Sakone. And they are, they have been working partners of mine for many, many years now. Actually, I, as a classroom teacher, one of my first professional developments was, was with Joanne on, you know, how do I, what do I do in the class as a classroom teacher to develop strong connections in the classroom? So it was really early on that I've been partnering with Joanne. And we had, as part of our, our improvement plan and working with developing relationships and climate and culture piece that we've been talking about, decided to have Pat and Joanne join us. So back in June, we had a two-day training. It was of approximately 60 staff, teachers, administrators, school counselors, support staff on instruction to restorative practices. At that point, that group really felt like if we could turnkey that and bring it back to our buildings. And so that team is actually bringing the restorative practice PD to the faculties. And so we've had two modules. We just hired our second module last week on a piece on trauma. But we've taken a lot of what we learned from Joanne and Pat and are, you know, working together as a team to identify what's the information we want to bring back to, back to the district that's most important and help move the work forward. So Pat and Joanne are here to provide you with a broad stroke overview. It'll be fast and furious. I'm sure there's a lot of information to share, but I'm happy to answer questions afterwards. With regards to what is restorative practice, what's the research behind it, what's the theory behind it? And how will it help to support strengthened relationships here in Eastside? So without further ado, I'll, I'll pass it over to Joanne and Pat and I will.
You're going to share.
Yeah. Yep.
Clicker doesn't work, so.
So I will, I will be the clicker.
Okay.
Just say quick.
I got the short end listed, so I'm going to do the fast and furious thing. And then, but I'll jump in. We'll both answer questions, whatever. We have our own little company. We have day jobs and the State Department of Ed, that's a home shooter defendant, which was also up in the state. And so for the last few years, we've been on our own, working harder, retired, in our own little companies, school kind of consultants. But so you can read a lot about what we do and how we work, but our main traffic is helping to create safe, engaged, high-quality relationship environments for kids. Okay, so. Do this as fast as you can. Feel free to jump in. Be kind of on autopilot.
Oh, wow.
Just want to let you know that last three years have been horrific. We had the COVID years, and we came back this past year. We thought it was going to be better. We got to do whatever. And I think you all know that from your own perspective. Or sort of kinds of traffic that we dealt with this past year. All of it. Also, all kinds. Losses as well as social, emotional, daily deficits. And during the two COVID years, we heard about mental health, social learning. Then as the year came up last year, we heard about mitigating learning losses. Schools and districts, not only here in Texas, but across the nation, of the world, the schools, all over the place. I have a poor losses as there is more star, and we need closure. But there's a way to have these kinds of traffic convert safely. And that's what we are all about. So we believe that we have a moral and practical imperative toward the story. Whatever that is, whatever it is. Little people are overwhelmed by big emotions. It's our job to share our calm, not joining their guilt. There's a little delay. Something away here. Okay, but schools that land, schools that land. That's really the fourth thing for us to start with. That's our North Star. It's not the traffic. It's version. Working around trauma. Learning gains and self-approaching. So one of the things that we know. So one of the things that we know and we have success with students and other adults. And one of the things that I'm sure everybody's heard is since you've all this goes way, way, way back, but since you've all the number one national concern of parents is the safety. And I think they think about this the same, but we park it as much as we can park it now. We have to look at what's going on inside. So wanted to put it on the table. One of the things that we were trying to uncover a whole lot of potholes. Probably the biggest pothole is the label for this word, all restorative practices. Restoration. There's still these important pieces. About how we practice. That is the most important piece, and I hope that you get a sense of what this is, because you'd like to say 80% now, when they pick that up, but it's really the majority. Majority of this work isn't about restoring anything. It's about building, transforming the environment, building, like, relationships. So we think this is very important. So there are really only two restorative goals. Build it. That's it. Very simple. This is not a program. This is not, this is not a curriculum. This is how we do what you do. We've got to break that. So I'm gonna paint some pictures, because, yeah, the potholes are huge, and the myths are big, about what this work is and what it is. First of all, we're gonna go with metaphor. Restorative practices is really who you are, who you are as a person, or as a school, as a district, and so on. And it's kind of like a growth metaphor. When anybody wakes up in the morning and thinks about all the choices we need to make, you know, what am I gonna wear, whatever, so on. Never save ourselves out. Today, I'd like to be 15 again. I don't know who wants to be 15, but that's not the choice we have for adults. So once you realize what it means to be a restorative person, you come to restore the school, or restore the district, you don't go back. You're there. And it's such a successful, positive, happy place. Another metaphor, and when we had storms, there is a picture of a tree falling on a house. Having a strong house, and the tree falls on it. You never know. But if this whole house is, and the tree falls, there's nothing to care. So you have to build a strong house, build strong relationships. I think the last metaphor is probably the best, and most times, we'll start at the core of it, so. And that is embracing something that we have called ourselves a family model. Now, sure, most, if not all of you are parents or grandparents, have more than one person at home. And you know it's like friends. Sometimes they can't get enough of one another, and sometimes they're warm. But at the end of the day, we may say, okay, we gotta separate, we gotta calm down, call that chill time. Bring them back together, because we're family. You know, there's only one car that takes us to extracurricular activities and vacation. They're only one table, and we're around. The last thing to do is mark the little bookcase, pull off that family handbook, which automatically releases 42, and then wow, 50. All the names, but that's three days out. Now, we never suspend our families. Because that's not what we do. We work it out, or we all be poorly, poorly, poorly when something like that happens. Typically, we separate. Classes, locker proximity, bus routes, spectacles, lunchways. So the kids never see one another again, which is crazy. So working restoratively is embracing the family model. Will there be problems with pockets? Absolutely. Cut them in. We're gonna figure it out. We're gonna fix it. We're gonna repair it. And we're going to be I think it's really important aspect of this metaphor, except being restorative in the world, even around the block a long time, this is the only work that we never encounter, that is not just for school, it's for people. You are restorative wherever you go. So it's sort of a double need. But we put bubbles in the background of this only because people are like bubbles. We love, you know, we share space, we bounce around, we say hello to each other, and so on. And that represents really the 80% of what we're talking about. We're going to build relationships. We're gonna build community. And if you do that, then when those bubbles bounce into one another and look in opposite directions, because it's screaming in the conflict, and mirror faces explode, which gets into the store and the justice piece that you mentioned, the laws that are starting to come around. This is not work that trades left to station. It's moving in all directions. So this is really a choice that you're not, you're not a now, you're not a later. But what is important, because as you start to be drawing those, learn that. But that represents, you know, the time you should be spending. 80% of your time in school should be that forming, building, parents form that wonderful community. So that when things, when the tree does fall on you, you're ready. But the 80% there, a pretty good proxy for the 80%, is the work of research around school connection. And I usually say it to the beginning as well. Say it now. I'm certainly not smart enough to say it. This is all based on huge body of research. So if any of you have questions about where this is coming from, we can inundate you with information, because this is not just a hole out of the half. But school connectedness was research that was done around 1999, 2000, funded by the military, looking at the impact of social mobility. Social mobility is where you have to pick up and start over, and you stay, and you're community, and so on. It's not moving with the cohort, the whole industry, the high school. That's not social mobility. Nobody had ever done the tax stuff. And they found out, the more moves you have, the worse off you are. But in the process, serendipitously, they found out that there are five really simple measures to help kids be, sit down, back to the school. These are, they have nothing to do with academics. Sorry to say this, except that if you have these, they can get to the academics. Feeling close to people at school, getting to have friends. Possible, but something that's not negotiable is there is people that you want to go, they feel that we go to in school, and moment in point. So we have to get school. We like to say, schools are like Disney, without the snacks and lights, which can be places that people can't wait to go. Heard about Spirit, that's what gets kids to school. It's not the fact that they know they're gonna be taken without, they're the sense of right. The sense of belonging is another people, as though they belong to something. It's not a whole school, but it's true, we can see the ones that walk in, uh, you know, robotics, whatever it is, that gets them there that says, this is flying, part of this that you want to have. The fourth thing, and these are not in any particular order, the goal is to support students fairly. This is about equity. It's not about equality. It's about meeting needs. But what's really interesting is when you start to feel that players about what it means to feel you're treated fairly. It's about being heard. It's about having a voice. And at the core, working restoratively, with all the strategies and so on, is making sure every single person has a voice in the day-to-day practice, as well as when things go wrong, and then feeling safe at school. So those are the measures of connectedness. We try to encourage schools and, and throughout the district to make sure that every student has that kind of All right, so let me just say very briefly, this is, talk about social practices window, for all working restoratively. Again, we do days and days of training, so it's training still this. And the social practices window is a translation of something that's called the fundamental hypothesis. And own this for yourself, but it's true of every human, of every person who lives a life. Human beings are happier, healthier, more cooperative, and most likely to get positive changes in your own behavior when those in positions of authority use things with them, rather than to them for them. That just makes common sense. But that gets translated into there are two scales in this translation, and I just wanted to have these slides, and the micro, and we've been asking questions after this, around the line. But there's a scale of expectations. I think one of the myths around restorative practice is we have no like, absolutely. There's limit-setting, discipline boundaries, all kinds of things, how you treat other chores to us. And then on the other scale, it's about support, love, their transparency, food, shelter, clothing, and on and on. So this is why it translates into, human, human beings are happier, healthier, and they're more cooperative, and most likely to get positive changes in their behavior when those in positions of authority use things with them, rather than to them or for them. So that's a translation of people. And the social practices window really is how you do what you do, how you practice. It's, it's not just about how you fix things, but it's how you engage with your children as an educator, everyone. So the hallmark of working restoratively is having high expectations, but that's coupled with the requisite support. Okay, very often, there's high expectations, but if a child asks for help, you should notice. That's not being restored. But we tend to be all over the map. Sometimes, you know, we've had a bad day, late work, thunderbender, all that kind of stuff. We didn't make it very much. So we started barking at everything. We feel bad, and I'm gonna say, oh, I'm gonna let him get away with something, you know, kind of unbalanced, maybe he'll be okay. And then there are days when you're asleep for a couple of days, and you let everything swirl around you, and it's chaos. But what we want to be is purposely wherever we are, we want to try to live our lives as a parent, as an educator, as a board member, never have a high expectation of now, move along. Pat and I were doing some work with another district, and making rounds to every school, but they're equity teams. Yeah, this work sort of brings equity in. And we went to the high school, middle school, and the last elementary school. For, we were talking, in any slides, we were just talking about restorative practices. Where, and you serve your teacher almost with tears in her eyes, similar. Because so much work and programs around this is you have to do push-up lessons, push-in, definitely push-in lesson at a particular time. Everybody has to get the same thing. Here's the script. This isn't like that. So we said, of course, it can be authentic. And then we started, and there's a lot there in that question. So it was in the middle of March Madness. So what we did is we thought about basketball. And there are certain rules that define basketball. Have to have five people on a team. You can't double dribble. If you want a basket to count, you have to shoot. There's certain defining, what are known as summary rules that define basketball. But then there are strategic rules. Play game well. Watch elementary school girls play basketball. It's a real trip. And then you turn on the TV and watch the women, because the strategy is way different. Okay, so you get a completely different kind of, so. So here is that metaphor. There are certain defining rules in work restorative. Build it and repair it. High expectations, high support. See things like circles and so on. But in the laundry list of the rules that define restorative, you get to be strategic about how you do it. And that's where the authenticity comes in. Another summary rule is never ask why. In a minute, we'll give you that. But anyway, that's our playing field. That's the core. Okay. Another way to describe it is, what does that core look like? Well, it has general patterns, clear boundaries, expectations, rules, and so on. But that's coupled with the kindness of safety and it's not one or the other, but that's what that box is about. So this is work that works because of human biology, physiology, psychology. This is not a fact. This is not something that people ask us sometimes. Does anybody go back? Well, the only people who launched this journey and then go somewhere else is the people who think this work is only about this and something different. That's the least of it. When they bring it in a narrow sense, they don't bring the whole framework in. They fail. Doesn't work, and then they go back. But people who really bring in the framework are successful. Okay. Again, you have all these slides. So these are descriptors. When we do training, we ask our participants to describe all of the different quadrants. So these are very commonly repeated descriptors of what it means to have a restorative classroom school. They're destinations for everybody. They're welcoming and safe for everybody, among other things. So the question is, well, if this is such great stuff, why aren't caregivers, community members, teachers, or restoratives? And we ask people without showing them the slide, and usually they think, well, this the old way was good enough for me. Dumps caps on, and kids in the corner, monishing in front of everybody else. That's all I know. Another reason is people worry about losing control. They think that there's a loss of control. Remember, high expectations, but people think that it's, it's gonna be chaos. The thought that it's easier just to, you know, be more punitive and rigid and so on, actually isn't easier. It's easier to be restorative and run a restored environment. And again, I just mentioned the misconception of restorative practice exclusively about restoration. Time. And people think that being restorative, practicing restoratively takes more time. It takes less time. I mean, you up, you really focus on the core star, the building relationships. Once you have that community, it's on board. You're not doing things over and over and trying to correct it. So the reason why people are not more restorative, they don't know how. Teacher preparation programs and other environments, we get one little tool on our toolbox. It's a camera. That's all you have. That's all you can use. So working restoratively, especially the restoration piece, is about filling all of our adult toolbox. So there is a continuum of practice, and we don't certainly have time to talk about them tonight, but that's at the core of how you make this happen. But what's very important to understand is these practices are for, are, are neutral. In other words, people sometimes think the only time you kick in a circle, or the only time you use restorative classes is when things are going wrong. That's not true. They are for everything. And so one of the myths that we want to punctuate is that kids are getting away with something. They're not. Kids are getting away with something. Please don't tell us that we're practicing other mental tools. Everybody's held accountable. We're held accountable to make it right, not just to do it wrong. And make me get right is educational, and that's the mission of all. We're not criminal institutions. We're educational institutions. We have an obligation to educate. If somebody does somehow have a subtle problem with that, we have to pick up the slack and help them do that. So the accountability is making them manage, repairing it, restoring it. It's educational. It's much more impactful. Children may need some chill time, even kind that counts as suspension. We're not crazy. You have a child who's disruptive to that effect, you get them out of the classroom. But what you do with them and how you re-enter that experience. Now, we expect a ton of experience with this, as Dennis just said, she can help this is healthy design. So nobody's getting away with anything, but the accountability is, again, to repair. So if you use restorative work, which for us is about building relationships that's your core star. Kids learn more. Part of it, because you're following a process, you're not facing decisions, solving decisions on our own, because it's a process. One of the thematic parts of working restoratively is, are these questions. Emily's has some that are a little more prepared. The one question that we usually ask done something wrong. Anybody know what that question is? And how does something wrong, what do we ask?
What'd you do? What happened?
No, we ask them, why did you?
Why did you do that?
And that's, that's the defining rule in working restoratively. Never, ever, ever ask why, ever. Start with what happened, and then you stand back and you listen. They're all around. It's kind of like building a sand. What happened? And the last piece of bread is how can we fix this? And in between, you can ask just about anything, as long as you don't ask why. All right, so hold on a second.
So I love, first of all, thank you. This is very helpful. And I liked your bringing around building the tool, with these skills. I know that you did two days of training with folks, and it was I know that you did two days of training with folks, and it was in June. I'm curious what other kind of supports and trainings are going to be available so that it's not just, we've got these two great days, we're going to flex these muscles like the first few weeks of school, and then they're not the additional support or accountability to work to implement these practices?
Emily's mentioned that they're working with all faculty and staff. We have the privilege of being here, it was September 2nd.
Yep.
And there are probably 150 or more of, probably, or all certified staff, non-certified staff. And we did a full day, condensed it into a full day. And we have all, yes, so.
Return modules.
Yeah, so we took that two full-day training, and with a group of 60, about half of them came in over the summer. And we developed learning modules, six learning modules, that we're going to slowly integrate over the course of the school year. So it's, you know, the two days is great. It's completely immersive. But in our world of education, it's a little unrealistic to be able to do that with all staff across the district in a way that's going to be like you say, meaningful. So after each learning module, we give staff the opportunity to kind of go out, think about it. We use the protocol start, stop, continue. So after I've learned, what are some things I might start doing? What might be things I stop doing? Or what might be some things I continue to do? And then we'll loop back around. So the first two modules have been a lot of just background around the why of restorative practice. The next module will get into the relationships framework that Joanne just, you guys have actually heard a little bit more than the staff have. You know, so that next learning module is on November 2nd. So we just, a little bit at a time, go out and practice it, think about it, how you use it in your classrooms, and then come back and we'll reflect on it. So we're hoping that through that model, module, model, we could, you know, implement with fidelity over time. We also have, with some grant funds, we are paying a restorative practice coordinator. So someone who is kind of a go-to person in districts who's been through the train-the-trainer model with Joanne, Erin Shaw. I'm not sure if you know Erin. So Erin is going to be serving as like a liaison or consultant to buildings around how could they further dive deeper into different topics? And then we'll be talking about our next level of work after this year. And of course, we're going to partner with Joanne and Pat along the way as well, because there's, there is a whole second two-day training that we haven't even explored yet. We are really living in the 80% right now. That is, that is where East Line is in our journey. Yeah. Right.
A great word for journey.
Yeah.
Progressive journey.
So at our next board event meeting, I'm going to talk a little bit about how this ties into our district improvement plan and how we have some survey questions that our students have answered that are tied to those five indicators that Joanne has talked about. And what the research says and how we're, what, it's one of our whys in terms of we're focusing on this and building strong relationships.
So I love this, and thank you, and thank you for bringing them to us. And of course, I'm a sociologist by training, and my mom is a speech and trauma teacher. So for me, it's all about the, about the language, okay? You said you don't like restorative practice. Are you able to suggest another? I know you like family counseling.
But we want to make sure that people, first of all, if we renamed it, nobody would know what we're doing.
Okay.
This is an international movement.
Okay.
But what we try to do, and we call ourselves the School Climate Consultants.
Because.
The most important thing to do is build relationships in community. So, and then when there are problems, we'll fix them. So we like the title. We think it's accurate, but it's confusing. Because people immediately go to the restoration. And they look at their data. I'm sure you all have seen countless, you know, reads of data around suspension and, you know, disproportionality and.
I just think the language is so important, and you mentioned that yourself. So I'm just wondering if, maybe on the back burner or somehow in the back of your head, you could kind of think about how to.
Well, let me give you one change.
Okay.
That social practices window.
Okay.
The experts, I mean, the people who in 1969 created it, called it the social discipline.
Hmm.
And just that one word. So at this point, so it dawned on us two years ago, that's ridiculous. So we, on social practices, language is everything.
Right, right, right.
And on our model, we really are talking about relationships.
A sort of.
Yeah.
And instead of work, you're talking about how precious each of us is and what we were as babies and how loved and cuddled and we need to continue that, right? That's part of your work, that's the thing there. Thank you so much. You're an amazing thing.
Comment. I have to laugh. I left faculty meeting today in old time. I got the same card. Today? Same card. No, I'm sorry. It wasn't one of their custom-made, it was a small business card side. Yeah.
Yes.
Same, same content. And, and thank you. I'm all in. I, you said you're working at the state level. Is there training that's happening to new teachers that are, you know, classroom management and so forth that's happening for folks? Because, you know, you walk in and you, you know, you, the way it's been, you walk in there and you develop habits. And then especially someone like myself who has habits from years and, you know, kind of, some of this stuff you've, you kind of learn on your own. If you're going to stay in the profession long enough that you start to do this anyway, and now now we've got a little go-to card, but you would hope that, that new teachers are getting some of this training in terms of managing. We were talking about, you know, losing so many teachers. I, I hear all along, you got, you got a new teacher comes in, they're strong in their content area, they're excited. And then we lose it because they don't have the ability to manage a classroom and, and they hadn't been taught how to do that. So I think that this is really, you know, you would think maybe some of it is just intuitive, but it's not. We've been doing things such a different way for so long.
One of the, we have two full days of school climate training. What we did is the restorative training. Faculty here, this is kind of jumpstart that, backfill necessarily, the older stuff. One of the final things that we do is through climate training, we raise these questions. We ask our participants to sort of prioritize what's most important. We give them anything. Relationships, you know, responses to, you know, misbehavior, differentiation. We give them like anything. What's most important? All relational stuff goes at the top. And then we say, where do you get the most professional development? We get the most professional development around content. And frankly, you know, we got lots of blue letters, you know, in our names. We want every kid to be super smart. And, you know, go on to college, whatever. But teachers desperately need close support stuff to build relationships. And districts that really are prioritizing that as opposed to, you know, anybody can look at content, you can read books about how, I'm not saying that's not important. Please don't.
No, we get it.
Correctly. But the point is, they don't get enough in the very things that they need to know. How to just create engaging class. I'm a former Google adjunct professor, former student. Now a real school job teacher. Couldn't wait to see where I was at school. He says, you know what I do? Every single class, every single class, I start with a goal.
With what?
E O L L. A goal. What's your favorite kind of pizza? You know what? The kids can't wait to get there, and they know if they're tardy. They miss the goal. So that is his strategy. It's a restorative strategy. To get them there, get them engaged. They can't wait for this. So it's taking the principles and translating them into what works to do to be authentic, basically what is about.
Other questions?
Well, thank you so much. That was really a great session. Really informative.
Well, if at any point you have questions or, you know.
We've got your number.
If you do have our number, and we're on speed dial.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I was going to see it. Okay, moving on to the next section, discussion action items, financial facilities, community. And our first topic is the 2023, 2024 budget discussions. So we talked a little bit about next year's budget at FFO, and we really want to try and work earlier and be even more engaging, you know, this, this year in preparation, you know, for next year. I think there's going to be a lot of tough decisions that we have to make as it pertains to next year's budget. Making sure, number one, you know, we're supporting our district, our teachers, our staff, our kids. And doing so, trying to find, we're that sweet spider magic number that, you know, a town that's dealing with a flip, as every town is, and higher costs is important to absorb as well. So with that being said, we really wanted to kind of hit the ground earlier, and then this is more kind of for open dialogue and discussion. First workshop is next month in November, and then we have one in December. Typically, that first workshop, in November, we're dialoguing more, but we will bring more in first than the first workshop. So we can have some discussions around where we see increases and how we're going to address those. So I'll kind of open it up, you know, in FFO chiming, part of that discussion.
Yeah. I'll start. I mean, I think it's just concurring. I mean, we're going into challenging times. We are very fully aware of it. Certainly not just our district, but this we blanketed. And we're going to have some really large challenges. So to get ahead and start early with open conversations with everyone at the table, like we like to do. And also sending invitations to our Board of Finance members as well to get the ball rolling.
Any questions, folks?
This might be a little premature, but I'm thinking a lot. I mean, obviously, we're going to have a lot of challenging discussions and decisions ahead. I'm wondering if, I'd like to hear everyone's thoughts on kind of the extent to which, or what our communication plan is for involving the community and stakeholders, like parents and our peers. I feel, as I'm reflecting on past budget seasons, I feel like folks tend to get really involved in that process, like right before a vote, and sometimes come in, you know, with questions or feeling surprised that, you know, certain decisions have been made. And I know that it's tricky, but as we're getting ready to do this process earlier as a board this year, I think we should also be thinking about the way that we're communicating and sharing, I know, headlines throughout the process so that all of our stakeholders, there's no surprises when those tough decisions are finalized.
I think that's a great idea. You know, and right off the bat, when you started talking, you know, we've had forums in the past, that type of thing. We also utilize coffee hours. I think it was on a weekend, I want to say that we went to during the school project conversation. That might be something that we can do. I know that the one, a few that I attended and represented at was very, very well-attended. In fact, that's where we met, he was on the board for a short time with us.
Ryan.
Brian. Brian and his wife and the kids had come because they were going to be possibly redistricted to the VP at the time. And I had given them the tour, but it was very well-attended. So that's nice.
So can we add to the budget workshop, the communication piece of the agenda that's talked about?
It's just a second, coffee hours. I know the women's have like a schedule for the coffee hours for the whole year. It's out.
We did it right out here. Yes, it did go well. We had a little controversy with posting it as a, which, no problem, we'll take care of it and address. But we provided an overview of what the place looked like. And I think we're going to have to talk openly and candid about things that we might, you know, reductions, you know.
And get feedback on that.
Get feedback on that.
Yes, yeah. And I'd love to get that feedback as early on.
What we just listened to is very relevant to how we present budget in terms of using some of the skills that we're explaining to parents, we're trying to build in your children to, you know, be responsible and respectful. And the most of those restorative practices, I would almost like to see this as a foundation for budget conversation and really start at a calm level.
Maybe, that's a good point. Maybe that's kind of presenting some of the facts where, you know, we have salary rollovers. Am I correct, am I wrong? Salary rollovers alone, we did a mock rollover, $2.7 million. And then insurance, you know, health benefits, $1.5 million. And that's at 10 and a half, a little over 10 and a half percent of an increase. We did a mock 10. That's what we, that's what we did. It was unexpected. We don't know what the state's going to come back with. Hopefully it's lower, but that's what we put in. So 2.7 million, 1.5 million, you're already looking at 4, 5, 6% easily of, of an increase over the current fiscal year. So right out of the gate, you just roll those two big items over, and there's where we're sitting. So we really have to have some pretty involved discussions about, you know, how we're going to work that number for our end of our year.
Comments, questions?
Okay, so more to. Yes, more, more thinking, you know, get your thinking caps on sort of thing.
Yeah, and I think if you can think about, are there changes that might be just a different way of approaching education? Or is there something that we could kind of change that would still deliver high-quality education? Just do it differently and just come up with some ideas. Just, I think we need to brainstorm and come up with a list of things that maybe you see other districts do, maybe just something you thought about and say, hey, could we do something like that? And it might not be something we can do this year, but it might be something that even take three or four years to implement. But you have to start somewhere. So any ideas are definitely.
And the administrators are already in that process mode as well. We've already had quite a few discussions about next year's budget. Stay tuned for more conversations. We just want to keep that rolling as a going conversation, continuing conversation.
The next topic is board of ed goals. So we had, your call, we sent out, we got last meeting, we had a list of 10 different potential goals, or, or not goals, concepts, or areas of thought for, for a potential goal. And we sent out a survey and we got the feedback from that. And I think how that would, interesting when you look at the feedback is nothing really jumped out as saying, this is the number one thing we all want to do. I think there were a lot of things that we wanted to do. So I, I think that the best next step is for our next meeting, which is on the 17th.
Yes, 17th of October.
Like to take each of these and actually either put a few sentences to explain what are we, what are we saying that this is? Just make sure that we're all aligned. Or writing an actual potential goal, not a final goal, but a potential goal. And then on the 17th, we could go through a prioritization process within that. Because I think we also all agree that we want to shoot for probably like four or five. If we have too many goals, that's, we don't get, get parts of each of them done. And if we can focus on four or five, we do a nice job of trying to get those done. So, sorry, I have them on my phone, on my computer. So what I thought we could, oh, you want to read that? Yes, I can read that a lot better.
Are there any additional hard copies? Because I'm not seeing that's important.
Yep.
Sorry, I know I didn't find.
No, that's all right.
Do you need one? Does everybody have one? So that they can say, oh, I don't need one to make this. Okay, so as we're doing that, so the first one was a policy carryover goal from last year. So that would be the same goal. So we don't need any work on that. We'll just lay out when we go through prioritization, we'll have what that goal is. This is not deciding on the goal. This is just a layout for all of us to then prioritize in two weeks. So.
If I can just ask, does that mean updating the policies?
This is the carrot. So the goal from last year, and we just were almost done, which is to revise the entire series. And we're on the night, you know, we have what 6,000, 7,000, 9,000. So we're almost there.
Update, revise, delete, basically.
Yeah. And then the second goal.
If I can just understand, Erica, before you go on, I'm having a hard time quick figuring this out. So if I'm understanding this correctly, two people identified that as their priority goal. One person, right?
So one part, so the first column, the blue, is that someone had it as their number one priority. One person had it as their number two priority. Two people had it as their number two priority. One person is four, one person five, and two people said it's not in their top five. That's the brown.
Okay. But it's not, not applicable.
We, that's what we label saying it's not in your top five.
Okay.
That's how we define it.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, yeah.
There that's one person, one person, two people.
Okay. If we did ranked choice voting, though, we could make a decision based on what we have already.
If you go through the data, the issue is we're kind of scattered. There's not, there's nothing that jumps out that it's one. So I think we need to, one is, I also want to make sure we're all, like we put pathways program. And what does that mean? I know what pathways mean, but what type of goal, like what would our goal look like for 2020?
Okay.
2023? What would a goal look like? So that we're all aligned to say, hey, I really want to do that next year or I don't, whereas I look at what that goal is.
I get it, right.
So, so the first two, so number one, goal number one, which is around the policies. Goal number two, which we called restore, which was our goal. We had a goal this year around restore. So it'd be again, a carryover, potential carryovers. There's no work. It's, we'll, we'll, for next meeting, we'll have the definition of each of these laid out. So that we can go through a more formal prioritization. So then when we get to pathways, so pathways, as you see, had a couple of people as their number one. No one is their number two, two is three, four is four. So I think for this one, it'd be good to define pathways programs. So I'm going to ask Ann Leece and Chris, who's not here, so he gets the, Chris Lund, sorry.
No.
Okay, that's fine. If you can come up with, what do you think is a, what would a goal look like that we could do for next year? In the pathways program? So what's something that we could do, get behind and achieve? And then as we scroll through, the next one is culture and climate, including redefining repurposing AAA. So I'm going to ask the AAA bill and the AAA team, if you could come up like, what would a goal, what would a goal look like? That we could have as a board of ed surrounding culture and climate and obviously work with analysts and AAA. For the mission statement, Jeff and I thought we could kind of put cart, craft some words around what a goal would look like for the mission statement.
See, I think.
Comment on that?
Yeah.
Too. Well, since that one seems to have four votes to it not being applicable, I think that that would be a good idea to maybe cross that out of our list.
That's the other.
So what, yeah, so thanks. And one of the things that I.
Overwhelming majority of people voting for those issues.
And, and we might get to a point where that gets voted out. I, my general, when I go through prioritization, if someone has it as their number one goal, and we have two people have it as number two. So we have as this really diverse thinking of the importance of a mission statement. If someone has it as the most important, we may not do it, but I, I personally don't want to outrightly remove it, given you have 37 and a half percent as two or above, one or two. It's too, for me, it's too high. And if we define what that is, it may fall out very well if you have, you have kind of half the people saying it, but it doesn't hurt. I don't think it's not a lot of work. I think Jeff and I can come up with something. And then we go through a prioritization and it falls to the bottom, it falls to the bottom.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this perfectly. So the headline is like, this data is helpful, but essentially what we're doing is next board meeting on the 17th, we're going to be revoting on these once they have a definition.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Yeah, I had a comment, it's, it didn't get captured here, but I mean, I had a really tough time voting between six, seven, and 10. Because I find them to all be so closely related. That I wasn't sure how to prioritize them because they all, to me, are kind of driving towards the same thing.
And what we're, where we, where we got to, I think 10 is the only one that I'm saying we maybe don't do anything on. Because I'm hoping it's contained in one through nine, that it can get a ton of really significant interest. So when we define, so I think we just need some words, right? Because that helps define like, what am I voting for? Mission statement, okay, I don't, what does that mean? Like, I think I need words to say, oh, yes, I'm passionate about it or I'm not passionate about it. And I'm worried that some people who may. May have a thought of what it is, which is different than someone who had it as their number one choice, right? So I want to make sure that Bill and.
Yeah, I, I agree. It was very difficult to vote based on not having more information, you know. We're talking about sustainable. Are we talking about green, sustainable? Are we talking about, you know, school closing because?
What is it?
Yeah. Fire the teachers, you know?
So that's exactly, Candace.
Yeah, so the, the questions and the topics. So like the one that has the AAA and then the.
Culture.
Yeah, so she's together, right? And there were, I just felt like there were too many. As far as a sustainable district, advertising, that kind of stuff, it could have really been a three in one versus all separate. I could go through it and micromanage it, and I'm just not going to. I feel like now we're wasting time because you put up a graph, we got a graph, it's process of elimination, knock it out and move forward. To me, I feel like the whole mission statement, I think you just want it in there because you want to do it. That's kind of, and I just want to be honest about it, that it's sticking because you want to keep it there. But the bottom line is, most people. You, you as in you, and possibly Jeff.
I have it as an A, so just to be honest, I have it as an A. So I don't, I don't think you should assume any, I think you're assuming that's, it's very unfair.
Um, I did assume.
Yeah.
All on it. And I'm going to stick to what I said. So as far as the elimination process of it, if you have one that is overwhelming, why would we want to rename it and bring it back and give it another opportunity when we'll just voted on it? So that's just kind of how I feel about it. So.
Candace, I've, I've done prioritizations for most of my career. And when I was actually surprised that the data was so disparate, it's diverse. It's, it's spread out. It's not, normally you'd do this, two or three rise to the top, three or four kind of fall in the second, not sure which ones. And then a few fall out to say, no one's interested in those. When you look at this, the data, you actually see it's, it's pretty spread out. The number of people who have the number one goal as one of these, as their number one choice is a number. So, um, which tells me that either we just have a lot of different views, which could be. It could also be, we haven't, we didn't define these well enough and we need to go through a definition. My view is we go through definition and make sure that we, when we say mission statement, what does that mean? When we say climate and culture, what does that mean? As we go through branding and marketing or becoming a sustainable district. I wasn't sure, I, when I, I was voting, I didn't exactly, wasn't sure if I was talking about environmental or was I talking about other things, as Bill said. So I think there's, you know, we need to define this a little bit more before we go and pick the bolts.
I didn't give my input, but I did, mission statement would have been my top choice. Because I think that drives the district and is one of the most important things, me personally speaking. But you as a board, it's, you know, you're making your goals, so.
But you didn't vote.
I didn't vote.
So. Some important information for us to know.
Well, yeah, I mean, but these are, you know, I, I've developed my draft goals. And this is where the alignment, you know, comes in. But, you know, I just personally don't think we use the mission statement enough. We don't say it enough, we don't, you know, it's not out there. I tried, started a convocation and.
We talked about the policies, very in-depth policy.
Okay.
Which is really interesting.
It just might, might.
I can't remember if we added it. We, we said we could run it by Jeff. Oh, okay. We haven't talked yet. We're a little busy, but.
Got it, all right. Sorry.
Is he?
So, um, actually, so then next was become a sustainable district. And Candace, I actually thought that was one that you had brought up, that maybe you could write a sentence or two to define, you know, what does that mean to become a sustainable district?
So when I'm looking at them, though, in the context that sustainable district was brought up, was in conversation. When I brought up marketing and branding for the district to create revenue to come into our district, because the challenges that we're facing, right? So sustainable is one of the words that had come out of my mouth. It wasn't specific, I think, to one, I think, I think it could be added. Like, why do they have to?
Together, is it? That's what I'm saying.
Exactly, that's kind of what.
That's kind of what some other folks say.
I'm saying. Right. So I mean, for me, the marketing, the branding of the district is going to create a more sustainable district for us. So I mean, to me, it could be just added. I don't know why it was separate. I didn't make it. I don't know if you made, I don't know who created it. I really don't. I think that it went off of the feedback that we had when Anne came. Isn't that true or no?
We, we discussed this at the last meeting and I had taken notes of what each person said. And then I did go back and say, here are the 10 things that I heard. And I had these as two separate, I didn't, again, that's what I had as, as my notes, so.
And I guess my thought on that was to lessen us, when it comes to budget time, we're going into budget season right now, right? And we're very concerned about what we're going into. We don't, we're not bringing any more money in. We're actually bringing in a whole lot less money than we have in many other years. So my whole context of what I was talking about was that we have incredible programs here. We have incredible things that we can highlight and that we can market so that we are progressing not on our taxpayers' pocketbooks. So that we're trying to help bring in revenue for the district. So that's what that was about.
Perfect, okay. I know personally I voted, I was thinking it was environmental, not what you're saying. So, so I don't know how people voted, which is fine. I am perfectly fine if you want to combine six and seven. I think we said you were trouble separating between the two anyway. So if you want to come up with a couple of bullets that combine the two, I'm perfectly okay with that.
I just have to quick comment. And I think the definitions will help, but I also think it might help if you just gave us each the only opportunity to vote for three. Vote for three things that you want us to accomplish. And then from that, then to me, that would make more sense as far as ranked choice voting. But that's just one idea of how to do it. And I know you've had lots of experience, Eric, so.
I think I had to pull up what ranked choice voting means.
What were we thinking?
I think, I think, I think there's 10 of us. And if we each voted for our top three, I think we'd figure out what was the best. It would, it would just filter through. It'd be like pouring it through, you know, like I said, and I think the best would come out. That's how I would see that you could simplify it, but that's just, I won't go on about it.
Okay. Let me, uh.
Too many goals, that's the problem.
Let me, let me think about it a little bit. Let's get to that, because we're going to combine these two. We get rid of 10, we're down to eight.
Well, you can combine, I mean, it, it's all kind of, it's speaking the same thing. It's just separated.
Well, it is now that it's defined, but when it was, when it was, you know, recycling and solar power, it was a different thing, which is what was in my mind.
Yes.
So now it's the same thing, but when I took the survey, it wasn't the same.
Okay. Okay.
In six, seven, and 10.
People's minds think differently. See the, see the word sustainable differently.
Okay, so can combine.
Yeah, it falls, it falls out with, but yeah, six, seven, 10. Want to try to take a chance at, in a few sentences?
To make this more common there, but what I actually like about 10 is that I think sometimes like roll around with store, right? Like, that sounds great, but that is so big and lofty that if you were to ask me at the end of last school year, if we did a good job on that, I'm kind of like, I don't fully, fully know if we. I think what the beauty about 10 is that, yes, it's related to the other ones, but there's like specific around like increasing revenue and funding programs, right? Like, that's kind of the how to get to sustainability.
Right.
Right?
Can I just read 10 aloud? Because it doesn't make. No sense.
But I like how it's like increased revenue. Like, to me, I think that's more natural than sustainability.
Deliver a quite high quality more efficiently and how can we increase revenue in budget programs? I'm like, I don't know what I'm delivering.
My one plug is that I, I think, I, I don't know. I think I, as we're drafting potential goals, what, right, like sustainability, but then also starting to map out how.
And how to get to it.
Exactly.
Right. I'm going to be confused. I'm glad to hear people are saying that, because I asked several times, several people for explanations of all of these goals. And I was told you have them. I went through everything I had. Did not find anything that explained to me what these really meant.
Or you shouldn't call me out. There's no, there's no explanation.
There's, that's the next, that's the next. There's the discussion that we have. This is based off, people kind of brought ideas and thoughts. Now we were trying to identify, okay. Line it up with, with what you felt, you know, and now bring that feedback back to the next meeting and let's narrow it down to five goals. And some of these will potentially merge maybe into one of those.
Yeah, because less is more and we found that, even though, because we end up with how many? I mean, we had so many, which are all good at 10, but then you've got, I don't even know how many we had. I think we had like 18 or 20, I don't even know.
Exactly. I mean, we know pathways is absolutely important.
Yeah.
Culture and finance, absolutely.
There you go.
Yeah.
The academic, high academics.
There you go.
Those are all, and those are embedded within.
And we put high academics, you just said that was involved in if we're doing. Well. Well.
Well, you know, you're, you're the broad umbrella of it, that's where we come in with our improvement plans and goals that we have created, that outlines the structure of how we're implementing.
Yeah, I wonder if some of the presentation on 17th will help set context a little bit better, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, I thought you were looking for information on culture and climate. Not these goals, I, this is the first time I'm seeing.
Yeah, we didn't have any needs, because the conversation hadn't had.
I thought you were looking for more information from AAA, the work, the in-between work for AAA, I didn't realize there was two in-between works happening.
We are not going to hold this against you, you are wonderful.
Got a lot. We don't have enough meetings, we have to have homework too.
You're not, you're not, I'm so sorry. No, no, you're not listening.
So Candace, did you want to do six, seven, 10, and did anyone want to help with, help Candace?
I'm going to take a stab, and I will take any help that anyone wants to give me.
Okay. I'll be your editor if you want to be the author.
Thank you.
Then, there was a lot of discussion about pre-K, and that discussion, did anyone want to take a shot at? And then for global languages, Esteban, I think you brought that up, do you want to put a few sentences? Great. And that's, yeah, so. I realized there's some feeling, you know, we're doing it twice, again, normally, nothing really. I will tell you, the number one, if you go through, goal one had one person, it's not their number one goal, goal two had one person, goal three had two people. Goal four had two people. Goal five had a person.
Wasn't me.
Goal seven had a person. Goal nine had a person, so you talk about how many people, that's just their number one choice, so number one choice is generally. If you had one and two, those generally kind of fall out, and you end up with, those are your goals, so that's where everybody's focused, and the things that you. Kind of would like to have, it's just not ready now, they fall out as the three, fours, and fives, but they did, and we're, we're diverse, so. I think it's worth coming up with some goals.
I think part of it was the clarity of the question.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we'll clean it up and try again.
So hopeful that if everyone can, by next, a week Wednesday, which is.
Off, maybe?
Okay. If by the 12, if everyone could get a draft of Jackie, so that we can include it in our. In the package for Friday. Yeah, for the 14th, the package will get out on the 14th, for the meeting on the 17th. Is that clear as much for everybody?
There's mine.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow. We have a meeting tomorrow, I thought, is it, is it not?
Oh, AAA is the 17th, Bill and I are just.
Oh.
Did I, did I?
It feels like that much day is it?
If, maybe it is, I, I was going to show up tomorrow, so.
Esteban, you must really be wondering.
What have I done? That way, we're good there.
Okay, uh, let's move on to discussion action items for policy.
You're right.
All right, so the first one is discussion action item for second review, which requires a vote for suggested deletion of policies in the 6,000 series. The policies suggested for deletion on, listed in the board docs. I'd like to make the motion to approve the suggested deletion of policies in the 6,000 series.
One second.
Further comment? All those favors, say aye.
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 Opposed, staying. Passed.
Second one, state suggested deletion of policies in the 7,000 series, they presented the board docs for you. Make a motion to approve the suggested deletion of policies in the 7,000 series.
Further discussion? Favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Passed. Couple first reviews.
The next one is a first review of policies, policies of the deletion in the 9,000 series, the 9,000 series is a bylaw that. Our charter for our board, so the suggested policies of deletion are 9012, 9020, 9021, 9021, 9026. Questions, comments? Next. Next one, in discussion action item, revision of policies in the 9,000 series. 9,000, 9020, 9021, 9023, 9032, 1, 9210, 9221, 9222, 9271, 9272.
So if you have any comments on those.
Questions. Oh, just a question, like, board member protection, 9260. Do you know what I guess?
9260, hold on.
Board member protection.
Sorry. That is. Concerning board member insurance, I think.
So my question specifically is that whenever I've asked any questions specifically about. A deletion or revision, you commented that it's, first of all, recommended by Shipman and. Shapiro, is that the name? And that it's their recommendation, and that it's recommended because there's other things that are covering it, and it's not necessary, is that, would that be your statement regarding this particular one as well?
Um. Yes, that is this one, it, um, the board event has to have insurance. A liability insurance.
So we do have that, no, we're self-protected, just, I'm just asking.
No, no, yeah, we, we have to have liability insurance and have it, I don't know where liability insurance app is.
Just wondering, but, yeah. Because any nonprofit has insurance typically for their board members, okay, thank you.
Question. That closes the discussion action items, and we move on to.
Can I, can I just say publicly, because Jamie sent us an email Friday morning, just added some notes, the, I just want to thank you and the committee. Publicly, because of the work that, and at least not here, and Jill's not here, Jamie, but phenomenal work has been done with this, and just, you know, we want to recognize that, so. The biggest things I've worked on, besides school projects, you know, as well, you know, it ranks up there, so, it was huge.
And how quickly it got done.
And thorough, and you do a great job, Jamie.
And Jill too was on that.
Yeah, yeah, Jill, Lisa, I know Lisa, she stepped out, but, so thanks to everybody to support with that. Yeah, um, so the last thing you keep brought up, school visits, and I think this should be, is a great idea, getting back to this. Because we did a pre-COVID some, and we haven't done it in a while, it's been three years at least, so we're working on a date. So I just wanted to put that out there in case someone missed in the weekly update that I made on Friday in my notes. We'll try and find something maybe either later in October or early November, at least, to open it up to. Get into, see, you know, elementary, maybe try and get a secondary of sorts too. And it was tough, not everybody can go, obviously, dates, but we'll try and, we did this last time, remember now, we had planned for a bus, we invited board of finance, board of second members, and, you know. Get a few, but it was, it was mental, but we'll try and open it up, if you have two different, three different occurrences that might work for some folks, or.
Thank you.
Right, so, and that will tie in nicely with budget too, I mean, because you're going to get asked questions, and you see things in schools, that's important, say, look, I saw this, that's why we voted the way we did.
Yeah, somewhat related, is there, I know we tried to do the calendar of events for board members to, but there was some tech. Or at least for me, I was able to access it, is there an update on, I think having, obviously, school visits would be great, but then also kind of a one-stop shop for other opportunities.
Yep, let me circle back with Jackie to see, because we were trying to, it was hard to maneuver, I think, and people couldn't access it, so, and then it got halted, so let me circle back to that. Make that easier. And then, just the, the only other one, you know, the, the baseball field, they're out scraping, re-scraping the surface of the baseball field. Water, now with water, they're seeding this week, so let's be done, and, and prepped by the end of this week, and it was like grass and nature, it was thing, and it'll be, it's grass that'll grow. And get up a base, and then it'll go dormant, and then be pretty confident about building some games on the field next, next spring. Collaborates with us, so. Should get that out there again, because I have a lot of questions, and that's a visible, eyesight, people, whole high school park. Process, so. That was it, it was too many. Make sure I share.
Thank you, that's Elise.
Well, we've been a little busy with the internet outage, but other than that, you know, we've got. Our first vertical fellow meeting happening Thursday afternoon, so this will be a curriculum leaders coming together, elementary, middle, high, for the first time this year. The point of that meeting will for them to share out their curriculum action plans for this year, and also start thinking about our full day P D days and opportunities, is that they might want to plan for vertical collaboration. Probably more so on in March than in November, but we're opening up for our conversation. Have the PSATs next week, as our student rep had shared, so the PSAT nine is, will be digital, and the. And, uh, but the National Merit Scholarship Qualifier, PSAT, is. I have updates from my department right now, just been doing, the visits, we've got setting meeting coming up with the little instructors, so. And just been in some lessons with them, have a great visit at my, my, etc. today. And, you know, my, my walkers in the buildings this year, everyone this year, today, you know, everyone seemed to be settling in without internet and adjusting quite nicely, so, you know. Our teachers were very flexible, and so, and managing throughout the course of the day.
Well, thank you for bringing Pat and Joanne.
Yeah, yeah, of course, I am, I am a big, big fan of those two, they're doing great work, they've really done a significant amount of work across the state. And beyond, to really support the work in this direction, so. Jeff and I have partnered with them on a state level too.
Yeah, yeah, I've worked with Pat and Wes McQuirzito, and, and Lee Gates, as a first-year principal, 18 years ago, I worked with them.
Nice.
So it's a long time, and we've been, now he's all over again, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elise, Mariana.
Off and running. An important point, Mariana, we're getting that information back a week earlier than actually we did last year, just to help expedite.
Mariana, so that administration reports, non-committee reports, we had FFOs today, Candace.
We did, we did, we had Rob here, we talked about the aquatic center membership and the finances, talked about a lot of different options, and looking at. The membership fee. Advertising with social media, the swim lessons, different programs, and different options to increase. Different ideas around, so I think it was a really good opportunity to have to come in and go over those different, and ideas, he is. The next, give us the proposals on possible membership changes, and looking at it a little bit differently, and I'm very excited to see when he comes back, I think it'll be nice. We talked about the athletics ticket app, Go Fan, we had the rollout of new way of doing things in the district, and just like with anything else, sometimes it can be. Hard to navigate at first, so I was really happy to have Deb here, and how they've already been very proactive, so. They brought a card reader on site, which should help with the reading of the cards, and that kind of thing, they put a hotspot in place, so for wifi. They, I think that it's going to go well with maybe the, some of those changes, there's no opportunity or option to go back to accepting cash, so. Hoping that everything's going to move along well, and I, I think that it will, and I'm really happy with what she came forward with, that they were really proactive, just on listening to the feedback of. Of the visitors, season pass, we talked about the season pass, and that, that link, it has come out, and they're going to continue to promote kind of how to access the tickets. I asked a, a few questions that Deb's going to find out about with the Go Fan app, if you purchase a ticket, just a singular ticket, and say you don't go. Is it transferable, do you just choose out, how does that work? So she's going to look into that. Standing committees, the finance facility, operations, policy revision, so we did some work there, and do you want to just give Jamie your copy, or how do you want to do that?
Yeah, what I'll use, I'll, I'll, well, yeah, exactly.
Would you do that?
We'll update it electronically.
Yeah, that was a really good opportunity to kind of tweak it, kind of make it, you know, what everybody was looking for, so that's coming your way, it really was, it's perfect. It was perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was perfect, we had discussion on the 2324 budget, and of course, we've already touched on that, but to start early on the process, and it's different ways that we can. Involve all stakeholders, and just be completely transparent and encompassing of our community as we roll that out, so I think that that's going to be good. And thank you to Eric, because he started it, because I was on my way back from the David, and I was roughing it, so I appreciate you. And if anybody has any comments or questions on. That's it.
Thanks, Candace, and.
So I do have to report. So Wednesday, we officially completed 271 policies in nine months. There's no way we would have done it without all of us together, we said Jill, we had Esteban's show, we had Nora's show, we had Eric's show. A lot of time, effort, and hard work went into it, and we, Jeff, it was definitely a team effort. We have a couple to go back. We have a couple to go back to and visit, but I'm pretty proud. You did a lot of work in a really short amount of time. And you guys were awesome. Thank you. Two hundred and seventy-one. I counted them all this week. Two hundred and seventy-one. It's a lot, a lot of policy.
Well, you know, Jeff said it all, restated and, uh, thank you to you and the Lisa and Jill and everyone because that, that is amazing. And it's great because I think we've talked about that for a number of years, getting through it and focus and get it done in nine months.
Policy keeps getting put back on the back burner and canceled for other things. So.
Yep. Great. Thanks, Jamie. So, uh, last item in the committee reports, we're going to add section E to committee reports for learn and keep updates. So Jamie's our cave representative, Kate is our learn representative, and it's just, just a good opportunity to get an updates of what's going on. And Kate, there's we all can, Kate has a ton of different sessions. We can't all attend them all. Uh, and it's good to opportunity for us to give updates, uh, for anything we've learned at whatever sessions. So we're going to start adding that to the beginning on the seventeenth.
A policy. That's a policy.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah.
It is a nine thousand policy and it was suggested we also add in the building policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting do a word update as a report.
Cave slash cave and language.
It's a policy. It's not just to do.
Yeah. Moving on to the closed committee reports and moving on to the word comments and future items. Candace?
The question on the athletic training, will we be able to fill that position or is it still not filled or do we have someone in place or?
So as of October first, there's supposed to be a new person in place. I don't have confirmation if that happened, athletic trainer? October tenth, okay. All right. I think brought that up, Jamie. I, I think, you know, we administratively need to have some more conversations about maybe, we, we've always contracted out for somebody to come in. Maybe it's time to hire our own athletic trainer that's part of the district. So we don't, you know, use your revolving door potentially. Just a thought, something we're going to explore a little bit more because we run some problems with that gap.
Well, right. And that's kind of what I was hearing. Um, and that well, is it, is it that we can't find someone that is specifically trained for it or are we having trouble retaining them? Or other reasons, what other districts do?
Yeah, most districts have hired. From what I've heard of hiring, uh, they're all.
I just met with Steve about this.
Yep.
Sounds like there's just a shortage of trainees on areas and shortage of any, any other positions. And we're not doing school.
Okay, yeah. So just one more question that I'm going to require. Um, what are we doing in the interim? So if somebody is hurt, right? There's no trainer. What's happening? How is that, how is it being addressed?
The coaches, the business directors, the board of parents.
And the fans come immediately. I got it. Of course. I got, okay. Yeah. Good to know of the ten thing. That's good.
Word.
Uh, first of all, I want to say kudos to, um, Jeff Beal for his work that he does on our Viking Saga. And I know it's a tree and I apologize for that, but I really like getting the hard copy and reading over and seeing the display of it. It's just such a phenomenal piece. I guess it's gotten some awards, hasn't it, over the last couple of few years and some of the alumni who've been editors have gone on to big newspapers and have done some amazing jobs. So kudos again to him. And also I, I'd like to, um, reiterate my statement about eliminating the use of cushion for inclusion services for students despite their level of need or their need that we consider ourselves in an inclusive environment and we all, we all have infinite worth. And also I'd like to have special education, you know, if I could just move on to the next topic, that would be future agenda, that would be, move that on to future agenda topic to talk about special education, what are numbers or lives, what are our ID levels, um, labels, where and when, um, like some update on the A B A programs and our levels of inclusion. I'd like, I'd like that for a future agenda topic.
Thanks, Kate.
That's the last. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I attended the back to school that I planned there. So I think, uh, when there was really a very event, I know you talked about the onward policy that was, about clarify that. So I want to thank you for that. Just the, the energy of having all the parents on there. Something was really good. That's, that's definitely, you know. And also a reminder that this weekend, uh, nine, I, you know, people say, uh, sack confirmation that we have, or consider it, we need to get drive.
Nice.
And then they have to traffic their, talking about their history, where they are now and whatnot. And that, that's what gets so definitely, uh, that's my focus.
That was a lot of fun last year too.
One's going twice. Okay. All right. So that ends. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same. We are.